Welcome, it's rare to schedule meetings in the course of a quarter. And if you'll join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in your word, you have given us a vision of that holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, the cities of the earth renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Send us honest and able leaders, enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression. Peace may prevail with righteousness, and justice with order, and that men and women from different cultures with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible)
Welcome all of you. We're glad to have you here at our meeting tonight. Happy New Year to you. Prosperous New Year for as we move forward. I think will be a great another year for the city of Harlingen. So we're glad to, again, glad to have you here in the audience tonight as we move forward. Item one is the public announcement of events.
Good evening. The first item on the calendar is the big Harlingen Winter Texans Appreciation Fiesta that's coming up here on January 20th. It will be from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Casa de Amistad at Fair Park. There's going to be a wide variety of interests there. There'll be business vendors, food vendor, a live band, we'll have Cat Ticket and Mariachi by Mariachi Vizol Esteca. There'll also be a court show, classic cars, a little bit of everything for everyone. So we invite not only winter Texans but our local citizens to get out to that event and mingle. Also this Saturday on January 18th, there'll be a very important Economic Vitality Forum to discuss the long-term comprehensive plan for the city. That'll be at the T S D C, it says Culinary Arts Building, but it'll actually be at the Cultural Arts Center, which is along Loop 499, near the airport there and the Harlingen Arts and Heritage Museum. On Saturday, January 25th, there'll be the South Texas Sizzler, 5K, 10K, and a little sizzle, One Mile Fun. That'll be at the Harlingen Soccer Complex, starting at 7:30 a.m., and then followed by the big run at 8:00 a.m. On Saturday, February 8th, there'll be the Congressional Heart Effect Awareness Festival at Long Sea Hill Fair Park from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This event is still in the planning stage, so there'll be more details about that for our next meeting. Also on Saturday, February 22nd, there'll be the 24th Annual Jalapeno 100 Bike Tour, which is very popular, not only in our local area, but we get people from all over the state here for that, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. It's going to be a full-blown festival with band performances, children's activities, and much more. On Sunday, February 23rd, there'll be the Second Annual Miss South Texas Senior Pageant at the Harlingen Disco Auditorium from 2:00 to 5:30 p.m. And we're looking very forward to a lot of participation and a big crowd for that event. So that should be very interesting. I believe that's it for the events at this time. There's always updates on our home website, so be checking that for the latest. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And we do encourage everybody especially to come out this Saturday to the T S D C E P N Center to participate in our forum on economic vitality and education. So it, I think it'll be informative, but we also want to get the input of the community, so please be there. Lunch will be served. If that's an incentive for you. Item two is the Neighborhood Clean Sweep, held January 11th, 2014, Hickory Hills subdivision off Bass Boulevard in District 5. The city manager's going to present their report.
Mayor Commissioners, just to advise you of what transpired, it could be 2014, not 2013. That's the title. But this past Friday, Saturday, we had the Neighborhood Clean Sweep. And we, this is a picture of some of the volunteers that assisted. We picked up 3.89 times of degrees. You can see some of the items that were picked up. Also, we also picked several times, well, 67 tires from the area. We started at 8:30 p.m. and covered the area from Bass Boulevard into Kingbird Street and some smaller streets in between. So we were happy to have gotten a lot of volunteers to assist us with that. And we want to thank all of them. And I'm not sure, I think we do have some certificate for some of the people that participated. And we want to invite everybody for the next one, which is going to happen, which is going to be held in District 4 in the area of West Grant and West Garfield Streets.
Is anybody here from the Cameron County Jubilant Justice Department? Don't know whether all of these certificates for them for, is there no other certificates for people who've done?
I think all of them are for them.
Okay. All right. So we don't have anybody here. We'll get these certificates today or bring them back in a later day. Item three then is the recognition of local area businesses who assisted Operation Crackdown 2013. I'm picking up those certificates, obviously some of the folks in Congress. Do you want to explain what they did?
Yeah. Operation Crackdown is a partnership that the city of Harlingen has with the Texas National Guard. It's a two-week mission where they come to enter our community, they bring the labor as well as the equipment, and they help us demolish structures that have direct access to criminal and drug activity.
All right. Businesses, go.
And we certainly want to thank all the businesses that assisted, I think providing them meals. A total of 31 structures were demolished, so we were happy with the efforts.
I know Anthony and Paula Martin are here, I want to call them up and present this certificate to them. And especially thank them for their participation in this really active activity. So thank you. Thank you very much.
We got them. We want to get them.
We can do them all, yeah. And a reminder, Debbie Olesario's already here, I don't see them. Is anybody from Machito's Restaurant? Come on up. Mr. Gaddy's? Come on out. Thank you. Sonic? Thank you for Sonic. We have a lot of great local businesses participating in this, so we really appreciate what you did. New York Philly, Bass Pro Shop, Latios Restaurants, Quater Burger, Coletti's, Peacock Construction, we're trying to go up here, Burger King, Blackhorn Steakhouse, Dairy Queen, Pizza Hut, Chick-fil-A, Olivenio Acuna?
I'll get that, he's one of our employees.
But you want to?
I won't stand up.
Get in the picture.
Put him in the picture, Ray.
Again, we want, Dave's going to take the picture. So I want to thank you again for supporting this important program. This is a great program for our community. It cleans up our city, it makes our city safer because we knock down those houses for graffiti and drug dealing in the local neighborhoods. And without your support, we couldn't do it. So we thank you and appreciate all of your support. Item four is the approval of the minutes, December 9th, 2013. Special meeting at December 18th, 2013. Regular meeting. Is there a motion? Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
The minutes from December the 18th, on page three, when it's talking about, it says the proposed contract and maximum allowable increase of 2 cents per year, it should be 2 percent a year.
Are there any other corrections or additions to the minutes? There are none, is there a motion to adopt those 2 cents of minutes with the correction proposed by Commissioner Yulon?
If I could make a motion for the December 9th minutes to accept those. I wasn't here for the 18th, so I can't move on now. So the December 9th minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, minutes are approved now to December 18th, 2013.
I'll make the motion to put the 18th in.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item five is the consent agenda, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda on final reading?
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item six is the discussion regarding the bids received following properties removed from Cameron County and other tax restrictions due to tax resale conducted on November 5th, 2013. And I'll just briefly describe A, legal description tract 2, Lot 9, Wallace subdivision B, legal description, Lot 12, Lot 2, Barton addition, C, legal description portion of Lot A, R I couldment subdivision, D, legal description tract 1, Lot 4, Lot 26, Harrison matter number 2 addition, E, legal description, Lot 68, Homeland addition, F, legal description, Lot 16 and 17, Lot 3, Harlingen addition, G, legal description, 0.606 acre, more or less, Lot 6, Harlingen land and water, Henry subdivision, H, Lot 10, Lot 31, original town size, city of Harlingen. Are you going to present that or?
John Gilott is here with Lighton Porter, if you can be presenting your remarks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, members of the audience. My name is John Gilott, and I'm your attorney for delinquent taxes. These, the list of these properties are basically, they're delinquent tax properties that were put up for sale multiple times. These properties did not receive a bid, so we put them up for resale. And we have a resale usually every November. We have tax sales about every other month, but every November we have a resale. These properties were from the Harlingen area, we put them up for resale and took bids from the floor. They were accepted subject to your approval, the school district's approval, and the county's approval of the bids received. What you're basically getting is about 40 cents on the dollar. By accepting these bids, one or two of them are above what you were owed, several of them are below what you were owed, some of them are right at, you know, pretty close to even, or half of the amount was up. But in any case, it's about 40, 42 cents on the dollar. The benefit of accepting these bids is you get them back on the tax roll right now because they're owned by you, the school district and the county. You know, you auto-trust these for each other on these properties. They're owned by you, so they're tax exempt, they're not incurring any new taxes. Some of these, most of them are, have been delinquent for quite some time. And so we bring them forward, we bring these bids forward to see if you might consider them.
Okay. Just a reminder, by the way this works is that when somebody's delinquent on their taxes, you take, eventually take the force of action to foreclose on those properties. And when you foreclose on those properties at the courthouse, and nobody actually buys them, then we credit the taxing entities credit bid to get the properties. And then these were then re, are sold because we now own them, because we took them, because nobody else bought them at the courthouse steps.
That's correct. Whenever we take a judgment on the, on the tax cases, we put them up for sale as quickly as possible, usually within two to three months, within 90 days. Most of them sell, actually, most of the properties that we put up for sale don't even get sold because the taxpayer will come in and make arrangements to pay them. And we're always up to the last day, we're ready to do a payment agreement. But if we have to put them up for sale, and every once in a while we get a property that doesn't sell, and at that point it gets struck off to the taxing entities. You now own it with the school district and the county. And we wait for a sufficient inventory of those properties to put them up for resale, and usually November, end of the year. And that way we get, we try to get more bidders at those, at that November resale. And so that's the reason we wait for that.
Right. Is there a motion to accept the bids that were received, the resales of properties described?
I think that's.
Would Debbie item seven set of six? Six is the discussion.
Sorry. Yeah. That's correct. Okay. Item seven, consider to take action to adopt resolutions approving the bids received on tax reset, conducted on November 5th, 2013. Is there a motion to adopt the resolutions approving the bids? I move we adopt the resolution approving the bids.
And I'll second that.
And I'll, in the discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Mr. Gilott. Item A, consider to take action to approve ordinance on first reading amending Chapter 51. Actually, I'm going to move, I'm going to move that later now as the agenda, because I'd like to know if it was acceptable on that item. Item nine, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone for residential single-family R1 district, good neighborhood services and S district for lots 8 and 9, Block 11, Nicholson Place subdivision number 3 located at 1213 and 1217 East Jackson. Advocate's great one.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. The applicant is requesting a rezone to subject property from residential single-family to neighborhood services to allow for an existing apartment garage to be converted to a duplex. This is a subject property, you can see it's on north side of Jackson Street, just east of, excuse me, west of 13th Street. And the lot is about 50 feet wide by 140 deep. You can see on the property, there's existing single-family residents on the property. To the rear of the property, there is a garage apartment which was recently converted to a duplex without a permit. Staff has been working with the applicant to bring the duplex in compliance with the ordinance, so the building permit is pending, subject to the rezoning being approved. The lot to the east of it was included in the rezoning request, it's an existing single-family residence. It was really included to continue the neighborhood service zoning pattern of the district and to avoid a spot zoning. Public hearing was conducted by the P and Z Commission. The affected property owners within a 200-foot radius were notified, I think we notified about 15 property owners. Staff didn't receive any objections to the request. The request is generally consistent with the existing land use of the area. Staff at P and Z Commission are making an approval of the request.
Can you go back to the area? Where the, where the big parking lot is in those apartments? Are those R1?
That's owned residential single-family.
It is?
It may be grandfathered, but it's an apartment complex area.
Okay. So that would make it continuous for the whole block in that?
Right.
Basically, that type of activity.
That type of land use generally. Most of our single-family houses, although some of the single-family houses have duplexes in the rear of the property because they've been there for years.
And why wouldn't we change them at the same time? Just because it's not?
Thank you.
They didn't request it at this point. I guess we could have done a city nature of rezoning, but they didn't request that, just the property owner to the, to the east did, to continue the neighborhood services zoning.
He did request it?
He did request it. The applicant didn't approach it, he agreed and signed the application to be included in the request to avoid the spot zoning.
And the reason they're doing this is because they're trying to get a permit to do something?
Right. They actually built a duplex. It was a garage apartment and converted to a duplex.
So the remaining six lots on that block, which is both on Monroe and Jackson, if they wanted to do something, I mean?
If they wanted to, well, they would have to zone it. At this point, it's a single-family, and actually, the future land use plan shows that it is, is built ends for single-family, so that's why it's your meeting, I think.
Okay. So this is a case of putting the cart before the horse?
Right. By the applicant.
Better to ask for forgiveness than permission.
Okay. Item A is public hearing. Now, the public hearing, is anyone like to speak for or against this ordinance? It's rezoned. Step up, if you want to speak, step up to the podium and state your name and your photo registration address.
Yolanda Shoffett. I don't vote, so then.
All right. Then state, then state your address and your driver's.
Two something, I don't know, Altaspanas, somewhere out there. Depends on where I live, you know, I stay with people and stuff.
You need to state your address.
Uh-huh. Well, it's 284 Altaspanas. Okay. It seems to me like this person, if I understood right, he went ahead and put that duplex without permission, so that's invalidation of the law to begin with. And then it's residential, and would that give the others an opportunity to do the same thing he did and break the law to make it legal now? I don't understand. To me, I think he broke the law to begin with, and I don't think he should be given permission. I'm sorry. Unless you give everybody else there, como dice dicho, todos el Dios o dos hijos el Diablo. Thank you very much.
Is anyone else would like to speak for or against this? Hearing now, opposed to public hearing. And go to item B, which is consider to take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading for the above mentioned rezoned request. I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Harlingen, zoning lots 8 and 9, Lot 4, Nicholson Place subdivision number 3 located at 1213 and 1217 East Jackson from a residential single-family R1 district to a neighborhood services and S district providing for publication and obtaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
I make the motion that we adopt the ordinance on first reading?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 10, it's a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to amend the city of Harlingen zoning ordinance number 07-27, Section 5, Use Chart, to allow a call center and office, O district with approved specific use permit, after Robert McCann.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a text amendment to the zoning ordinance manages chart, to allow a call center and office district with approved specific use permit. This is our existing use charging too. What's in black is existing, it's a call center, we have a zoning designation, they're allowed in general retail districts, light industry, heavy industry districts, and possible PD districts. The applicant is requesting to be allowed in an office district with an approved specific use permit. Basically, an office district is, per the zoning ordinance, is defined as a district which allows professional office and administrative offices. I think the applicant's future plan are to allow a call center on a property on Keen Drive, but, so this tax amendment is approved, the applicant would still have to come back and apply for a specific use permit and we're currently awaiting the commission for approval. This is the current subject property. You can see what the request is just for, to change it from not allowed to a specific use permit request. We did have a public hearing before the P and Z Commission, and it was advertising the newspaper. Staff at P and Z Commission already made approval to the request.
On this chart where you have an S, that means they have to get a specific use permit?
Right.
So if I wanted to put a bed and breakfast in an office district, it's allowed, but I have to do a special use permit. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct. Currently, it's not allowed, but the applicant is requesting it be allowed with a specific use permit. So this is strictly just to change the ordinance. It doesn't grant him the specific use permit. He would still have to come back and apply.
Rather than be an X, it's going to be an S.
Right. That way it would be reviewed on a case-by-case basis to ensure it's compatible with surrounding areas and zoning districts.
Thank you.
And the specific use permit would, that would address parking issues?
Correct. Parking and other building code requirements.
Okay. So we're going to have to, this is a great project, but we want to be careful about parking issues with these call centers.
Sure.
All right. Anybody, go to item A, it's a public hearing. I love the public hearing. Has anyone like to speak for or against this proposed change?
Only because you're my friend.
Jerry Moore, 709 Town Lane. I just have a question. Call centers bring to mind cell phones, cell towers, and specifically zoning and planning, and the health effects of the microwave radiation that is emitted from all the RF radiation, both from the cell towers but also the transmitters and the modems that are being used within the facility, and its effect on other occupants in the area. And I'd like the planning and zoning and any other city official educated in the areas of microwave radiation, how this is going to affect the specific health concerns of other occupants in the area. Thank you.
Yolanda Shoffett, I don't really understand why you would go ahead and give them permission without going to the special use permit. You would think that you would get the special use permit first, make sure that they have enough parking space and whatever. And how many cell towers are they going to put up that is going to endanger the community around or the people that are working there? For some apparent reason, people don't understand about cell towers, the radiation involved, the health issues about it, and the more radiation tops like the cell towers and the windmills and this particular call center will bring into the community, it may bring jobs, but it's also bring zap, death, and dying. And that's being zap, death, and dying. You remember those words when you have cancer. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against this specific use permit?
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. My name is Galilei Garcia, I'm the Executive Director for Harlingen Economic Development Corporation. The applicant is trying to address a potential use for this building. He has talked to us about the potential to attract a call center company such as United Healthcare, ACT, Dish Network, and several others throughout the region that are out here. As a potential large employer, the Harlingen EDC welcomes the addition of that tax amendment to the zoning ordinance because it only makes sense. Those jobs are in an office setting. Those jobs are indoors. Those jobs, those facilities do not bring in customers from outside the streets. The only parking requirements that are required are for the employees, and so I'm sure planning zoning, along with everybody else, is going to look at those issues. And most of those call centers use fiber optic lines that are underground, not cell towers.
Thank you. I'll give you 30 seconds because this is the page, just everybody gets a chance.
Yeah, that's fine. Jerry Moore, 709 Town Lane, just a response to the EDC's report here. I'd like to at least bring the commission, mayor, the city attorney, and city manager of a key scientific evidence of public health policy recommendations concerning RF radiation, both in, in buildings and around buildings, either through fiber optic cable, through modems, and the microwave radiation that's put out there. But anybody can go to the BioInitiative Working Group study that was done in July of 2007, and it talks about all the exposures from both ELF, extremely low frequency, and microwave radiation that's exposed, not just from fiber optic cable, but all forms of microwave radiation that's in buildings, through routers and such. So I would strongly encourage that the city be prepared at the next meeting to review the key scientific evidence of public health policy and recommendations as stated by Dr. Carpenter, Mr. Seitz.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? All right. I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is consider to take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on certain. Can, if you want, we'll wait till, but let's wait until, till we get the discussion part of this. I have B, consider to take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading, amending the City of Arlington zoning ordinance to allow a call center with approved specific use permit. I'd like to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the City of Arlington zoning ordinance, ordinance number zero seven dash twenty-seven, section five, use charge, by allowing a call center and office, O district, with an approved specific use permit, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related foregoing.
I'll, I'll allow for, there will be discussion if there's, there's a motion.
There is a motion, I'm placing the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to point out that that's the former, uh, Valley Diagnostic Clinic, and, uh, plenty of parking, uh, when it was the clinic, and there were still over parking on the Presbyterian Church, uh, adjacent to there, they have rented that space. And that would be a continuation, so there should be no issue with, uh, parking or access, uh, traffic, as, um, Hayne has already had that traffic pattern when the clinic was open.
And, and we just need to clarify that what we're talking about tonight is not a specific, for a specific location, they're using that as a general, so that we can understand that all we're doing is making an exception to the ordinance, so that they're still gonna have to come back with a specific use permit, and we'll have to confirm that they can have all the adequate for each location. Is that not correct?
I think that's right, I think it's just allow, allows for us to be able to, um, allow this type of, uh, business, because it expands our, uh, classifications under the chart. And so that if they, if and when they do come forward with a SUB, we will be ready to consider that in this category.
Correct.
Which currently doesn't exist.
Right.
Okay. So, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item eleven, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to amend the planned development site plan for residential mobile home to residential single-family, uh, twenty-foot, uh, front, five-foot east side, ten-foot west side, rear setbacks for lot four, block five, Cottonwood Creek subdivision, located at thirteen fourteen Cottonwood Boulevard.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting to amend the PD site plan from a residential mobile home to residential single-family, to allow for single-family residents on the subject property. See, all that's in gray, this is a planned development, which is approved back in nineteen eighty-three. Uh, since then, there's been like three amendments to this, uh, planned development, uh, site plan, where they changed the, the use from mobile home use to single-family uses. So the request is generally consistent with, it's been approved in the past. Uh, these are the setbacks that are proposed for that particular lot, uh, which are multiple setbacks. You see, generally, the area is developed with mostly single-family residents, and there are still a, there's a few of, of mobile homes in the area. This is a subject property, uh, you see right now, it's an existing concrete slab, there's a garage in the middle of the property, with the proposal to build single-family residents on the property. The future land use plan shows this area low density residential, so the request is consistent with a future land use plan. Public hearing was conducted by the P and Z commissions, we didn't receive any concerns in public hearing, staff of P and Z commission are recommending approval of the request.
Uh, good I have a public hearing, showing like to speak for or against the ordinance to amend the planned development site plan. Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing and go to I have B, which is to consider to take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading to amend the planned development site plan, three above mentioned, describe the property, and I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Arlington, amending the planned development PD site plan from residential mobile home to residential single-family, twenty-foot front, five-foot east side, and ten-foot on the west side, and rear setbacks for lot four, block five, Cottonwood Creek subdivision number one, located at thirteen fourteen Cottonwood Boulevard, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading? Show me. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item twelve, consider to take action to grant a variance to the City of Arlington subdivision ordinance number zero seven dash twenty-eight, section three point four three K, at four point one one eight, traverse to fire hydrant required of private access easement on the proposed replant of Walmart subdivision lot one, block one, bearing legal description of Walmart subdivision lot one, block one, located at seven oh six Dixie Atlanta Road, African Victor, where there's some lines remain for peer view, ranch, and LP.
City Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a variance to fire hydrants that is required of private access easement for, uh, re-subdivided property. This subdivision was actually subdivided back in nineteen eighty-nine as a one-lot subdivision, but the developers proposing is to subdivide it into two lots, basically, this would be the one lot, this would be the second lot. The existing lot in the rear has existing, was known as the Conns Building, and adjacent is the Goodwill Store, but the proposal on this corner lot, which would be the southern east corner of this property, would be for a proposed Popeyes Restaurant, it's about twenty-five hundred square feet building. Generally, the applicant is requesting a variance, being filled with the existing hydrants that comply with the adequate, uh, fire coverage. As you can see, there's the existing Conns Building and the Goodwill Store. The proposed Popeyes would be on the corner here, it's the southeast corner of the property. All these red dots on this area now depict existing fire hydrants in that area. This is a subject, uh, property right here, and, uh, of course, a proposed restaurant would be on this corner here. Two fire hydrants are required per ordinance, because fire hydrants generate quite every three hundred foot intervals in commercial areas. The applicant is proposing one fire hydrant on the front of the dis-proposed restaurant. The second one would generally be required along this private access easement, which is not part of this property, but it is required, uh, generally, you can see there's existing hydrants in the area. This request was reviewed by the Fire Prevention Department, and they have no objections to the, to the variance request. Staff of P and Z commission are recommend, recommended approval, being that the variance does comply with the findings of the subdivision ordinance to grant the variance, plus with existing fire hydrants in the area, as well as the ones that the applicant is proposing along the front of the property would comply with fire level requirements. I'll take any questions, and believe the surveyors here present any questions on the variance.
So the fire department is comfortable with this?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, yes. They're recommending approval.
And this is only, uh, walking distance from the existing fire station?
And, and P and Z voter approve it, okay, is there a motion to take action to grant the variance?
I make a motion that we, uh, go forward with the variance?
The second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item thirteen, consider to take action to grant a variance to the City of Arlington subdivision ordinance number zero seven dash twenty-eight, section four point one three K one, which regards, with regards to a hundred and twenty-foot, uh, right-of-way, uh, for, for Major Arturo Street on the proposed replant of lot one, block one, Walmart subdivision, bearing no legal description, of lot one, block one, Walmart subdivision, ahead on the west side of Dixie Land Road, between Furniture of eighty-three and Lincoln Avenue, African Victor, where there's some line, survey, peer view, and investments.
Mayor Commissioners, this is the same subdivision that was just before you. The applicant is requesting a variance, the right-of-way is required for this, uh, subdivision. Currently, Dixie Land Road is designated as a major Arturo Street, which requires a hundred and twenty feet of right-of-way. Currently, there's eighty feet of right-of-way, and the street is currently paved sixty-one feet, uh, back-to-back. Uh, see, this shows a red line, which is a major Arturo Street. As you can see, most of the area, it shows that it's generally developed, so it would be difficult for staff to acquire the additional right-of-way to expand it to a hundred and twenty feet of right-of-way. So that's generally the hardship in this case, it's, most of that area is already developed. Uh, from, the front is road down to Lincoln Avenue, and of course, we go south of Lincoln. All the way to Garrett, you can see existing single-family residents, so it would be difficult for staff to acquire the, the additional right-of-way. Staff of P and Z commission are recommending approval of the request. I'll take any questions, and the applicant is also presenting questions.
Will there be an entrance, uh, an additional entrance into the property from Dixie Land?
I believe they're gonna come in through the, uh, all the access easement, the private access easement that's off of, uh, which comes in through the Louvies.
Right.
They're gonna come in, they're not gonna come off Dixie, they're most gonna be at the corner.
Okay, so they're not going to cut an additional opening into Dixie Land?
Right, correct.
Now, the bank cutter, additional opening on the, uh, on the north side of that same lot for the ATM.
Right, correct.
But my, my recollection is, is when you, you turn into that non-named street, it has an island, and then it has curb, almost all the way back to Conns, before you can come back around.
Right, and that's a private access easement, which was dedicated five years ago, we developed the Harligenic Corners subdivision.
But that would be awful close to the line to have a, uh...
Right, correct.
A curb cut, sir.
Okay, any other, uh, questions or discussion? Then, uh, is there a motion to grant the variance?
So move, second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item fourteen, consider to take action to approve an interlocal agreement with Tropical Behavioral Health and the Harligenic Police Department for three mental health officers.
Mayor, City Commission? Howdy. Um, basically, this is a request for, uh, the Harligenic Police Department to enter into an interlocal agreement with, uh, Texas Tropical Behavioral Health, where we'll assign three officers to handle mental case-type calls, uh, section twenty-six calls. Uh, the salary, the, including benefits and all, will be paid for by a federal grant received by, uh, Texas Tropical Tex, or Tropical Texas Behavioral Health, and, uh, it's a three-year grant, uh, no one's ever been denied a renewal of the grant. Uh, we're certainly excited about, uh, participating in this program with them. It'll, uh, uh, should free up countless man-hours, where patrol answers probably about three hundred and fifty calls per service a year in dealing with mental health issues, and this will free up those officers to patrol their areas and, uh, make their traffic contacts.
Is this brand-new, or is this already new?
Actually, this is a new program in the valley. I know that in Hidalgo County, they're entertaining, uh, this, uh, program as well. I also have a young lady, Holly, she's here from Texas Tropical Behavioral Health, if you have any questions for that.
So we'll be the first in the valley to have, because we, we currently do not have this, is what you're saying?
Actually, I believe that, uh, the Edinburgh Police Department has already signed, uh, an agreement with Texas Tropical, but we'll be the first in Cameron County that I'm aware of.
Okay. And then what constitutes the requirements for a mental health officer? Is there any education or special education?
Absolutely, they'll be, they will certainly be trained in dealing with mental health patients.
Will these be new hires, or are we gonna be taking existing officers and retraining them?
We will be taking existing officers and using them for the mental health position, but then we will be, uh, hiring brand-new officers to take their place.
That was the second question.
Yes, sir.
With three hundred and twenty-six calls that we've had, are there more calls that we don't address? Is that why we need, I mean, we really need three people?
Um, actually, at the task force, my understanding of the task force is Cameron County-wide, so they will handle, it's, it's not just Harligenic Police Officers, it'll be police officers from other departments as well, uh, and they'll handle all the, uh, mental health issues for Cameron County, so.
And who will provide the training to these officers?
That will be Texas Tropical Behavioral Health.
Now, you just said something, they're gonna be handling all of Cameron County, but we're gonna have three assigned to the Harligenic area?
Right, they will have, they, they will answer calls out of Cameron County, but they will also answer all the calls that come out of Harligenic.
But if Brownsville gets some, then we'll have some overlap in San Benito, or...
Correct, correct.
And then what will the coverage be, is this twenty-four-seven?
Uh, they will have officers on, on duty during daytime hours, during the evening hours. There will be no officers on duty during the graveyard shift, however, they will be on-call in case they get a call out.
And, um, you said this is a federal grant?
Yes, sir.
And has the institution, uh, is this new to them, too? You said there was a person here.
I can see her nodding, her head behind, over your shoulder, that's why I was looking at her.
He's been right on so far. I'm Holly Correll, I'm Associate CEO at Tropical Texas Behavioral Health. This is a brand-new federal grant, it's from the Center for Medicaid Medicare Services. Uh, it's called an eleven fifteen transformation waiver. Um, it's brand-new to Texas, so it's brand-new to us as well.
Okay, and then the training, uh, your, your institution will be providing the training?
We are, we have a gentleman who...
And that'll be classroom?
Correct, we have a gentleman who is a former, um, DPS officer, who has very good, extensive task force experience. He'll be operating the program, and he is going to be trained, he's actually in training today, to, uh, be able to train officers in mental health officer, and they'll achieve a certification in that as well. It's a week-long training.
Okay, and then how are these three officers chosen for this? Is this seniority, is this whoever wants to do it?
Right, right now, we have put out a request to the officers in the organization to see if anybody's interested in, in working the, the program. There are some officers, we already have three officers, I believe, that are certified mental health officers. Uh, one of those officers have already submitted an, an, uh, IDC of interest to, to join the team, so. We're, we, we still have about a week for the rest of the officers to submit interest in the, uh, in the unit if they so desire.
It dovetails nicely, I think the RAC is adding psychiatry as one of their residency programs, and so we're making some quantum leaps all of a sudden in mental health.
And this is done with eleven fifteen waiver money?
It is, and it's probably the same grant funding that the RAC is using as well. There are quite a number of projects across the county.
They'll be prodding a lot of the money for the residency slots, uh, for the medical school. Uh, well, I think it's a great, I, I think it's great, because as, as we, you know, as you keep hearing about violent crime across the nation, uh, most of it seems to be attributed to mental health issues. So to be able to merge, uh, more closely, uh, our law enforcement, uh, contention with, uh, people who know how to address mental health issues, that's probably a, a great thing for our community, and, uh, can I congratulate the department for being the first in the county to adopt this program, and thank you to Texas Tropical for partnering with us.
Yeah, we're very happy to do it, we're, we're excited to do it.
Very appreciative.
We actually have a mobile crisis outreach team that does crisis response to mental health emergencies in the community twenty-four-seven, so we're thrilled to be able to have law enforcement to partner with us.
Great. All right, and is there a motion to approve the interlocal agreement?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement, just to...
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, again, thank you for being here tonight to explain some of these things to us. Item fifteen, consider to take action to approve or reject bids, and award the contract for the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen general fund, over there, and bid twenty fourteen zero three.
Uh, good evening. The, uh, project consists of rehab existing asphalt roads, uh, will rework the, uh, Leech, uh, ad line, and will repave the asphalt pavement markings. On, uh, January the seventh, I received an opening total of eight bids for the proposed project. All bids received met the bids and minimum requirements. The lowest bid for the project was submitted by, by FJW Construction in the amount of five hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred and three dollars and fifty cents. Staff recommends that we accept the lowest bids submitted by FJW Construction.
Have we worked with them before?
Uh, yes.
Quality work?
Uh, yeah. We're there, we're always on top of them, making sure they are doing a good job, yes.
And they're efficient?
Uh, yes.
You're comfortable with this?
Yeah. Tender contractor.
You're just gonna have to...
They're doing this for a lot of my best, bro, working right now. Uh, yes.
They're finishing up the Thursday drainage dish project right now, listen to that. They did phase five of the, uh, the Kenan and Hayes project. They do good work, just like any other contractor, you gotta stay on top of it.
They'll be all right then?
What was, this was the FJW?
FJW, correct.
Where are they from?
Uh, Michigan, Michigan, Michigan.
Oh, Michigan?
Michigan.
I heard, I heard Memphis, I was going, Memphis.
And they got papers?
No, I just wanted to know if they were local, here in Cameron County.
Well, well, our, you, uh, our city engineer will make sure they do everything they're supposed to do, right?
Yes, we will.
If it's just more work for you, that's okay.
That's okay, thank you, oh yeah.
All right, uh, is there a motion to, uh, accept or reject?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
That's to, to award, but accept the bid, award contract, I guess, change. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item sixteen, consider to take action to approve the renewal of a one-year contract with, excuse me, the City of Arlington and RGV Amateur Adult Soccer Association for the use of the soccer fields at Vestal Park.
Happy New Year, Mayor, uh, City Commissioner. Um, the subject park that we're talking about tonight, uh, give you the variances, uh, the three soccer fields, three full-size soccer fields at Vestal Park. Vestal Park, uh, is adjacent to Zavala Elementary, just north of downtown. Uh, local historians tell me that, uh, Vestal Park was one time either named or known as Tri-Pac Park due to the, the adjacent business, so that's what we're talking about tonight. Um, the Amateur Adult Soccer Association that uses this, uh, field, has, this, this park has been here for years. If you've ever been out here on a Sunday, it's an amazing site. Uh, there's in excess of two hundred adults out there playing soccer on these fields. One of the projects that you'll remember, uh, over the last couple of years that we've completed out here, uh, was to irrigate that park and irrigate those fields. And so, uh, that has turned out nicely, uh, there's been a, uh, CDBG-funded restroom at this, uh, park for years. Uh, the delay in getting this contract to you, you'll notice in the timeline, uh, their contract actually expired, uh, the end of August of last year. Uh, when it was approved in two thousand and twelve, uh, you'll recall that, that was, they were one of the first leagues that had the requirement of the audited financial report. And so by the end of the year, they were a little bit lost, we had to help them to get to that point. Uh, their insurance never lapsed, lapsed, lapsed. Uh, they're a great league to work with, uh, we allowed them to continue to play. Uh, and about a month ago, December the tenth, December eleventh, we got that audited financial report. Uh, so we're here, uh, in front of you tonight, asking for you to renew the contract. Planning Commission reviewed it, I believe, in October, or, excuse me, Parks and Recreation Board reviewed it in October, they unanimously... Yes.
I've got a question on this. If this organization, no name or nothing over here?
It's the Rio Valley Amateur Soccer Association. It's the adult soccer league.
Yeah, that's, that's a, no name who's going to run that soccer field over there? How many times did you go over there and check?
Excuse me?
How many times did you go over there and check that park?
That park? I was actually at that park this, earlier this week. And probably twice over the last year, I've been there on a Sunday to observe their, their league.
Because also the contract over here is already done. You approve it already, right?
No, this is what is before you tonight, is to approve this contract.
It's been up here for 10 years, right?
Yes, correct.
And the contract is the same mistake you do before the others. There's no, no 10, 19 or nothing over here. I don't see anything on there.
I have the file. Everything is on file in here if you'd like to. We didn't include it in your packet.
Over here I got OGB, Adult Soccer Association.
Yes, sir.
And then over here in the insurance, Texas State Soccer Association.
Which is their sanction. Yes.
I think, I think we've got those and they're doing, check this contract again.
Well, this is pretty much a standard, the standard contract.
Almost the same dollars?
It's, it should be the same. I looked at it, it looks to be the same contract.
It is the same.
Standard contract that we use with all the organizations.
In fact, if you recall, we talked youth football in the fall. We talked about entrance fees. That is actually in this contract as well. The difference being this league doesn't charge any gate at all and they never have. About a 10 there.
And we have added the additional requirement that we added to the other parks. Those are in here.
Yes. We put their filing that they are a nonprofit.
Nonprofit.
And you have that in the file.
I have it all.
We didn't get it with the-
Correct.
Are we using a standard contract for all of them or are we just kind of trying to make sure that all the contracts have the same stuff?
Well, I think, I think we use basically a standard, from my perspective, a standard contract. We updated them because of changes the commission had requested in the last year or so. But, you know, basically it's a standard agreement, I think, with all these organizations so that we, you know, know what we're, know what we've got in the agreement.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose motion carries. Item 17, consider to take action to approve an agreement with Ninos Head Start for the use of the community center, Casa Sol, as a temporary emergency holder. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. Ninos Head Start is asking for an agreement to use the community center or the Casa Sol in the event their facility is rendered inaccessible due to unforeseen circumstances. The agreement before you this evening will allow that. What we're doing is allowing them up to four hours to use of the facility for basically pickup services where the parents can go pick up their kids at that site. It would be at the current rental rate of the facility. What we did was the rental rate for the facility during the week is $650. It's for an 11-hour rental. We divided that and came up with an hourly rate. We came up with $236. We rounded it up to $240. They're in agreement with it. Staff is also recommending approval. We don't see a problem. Again, it's only in the event of an emergency. And they've had an agreement with us since 1999, signed agreement. I have a copy of it. They have never used the facility. It's only in the event they really need to use.
And then how often then is the city commission approve this agreement?
I believe that we did an automatic renewal unless terminated by one party or the other. I believe that's what we put in the agreement.
And we've had this contract since when?
We, well, we had a contract with them, I think, in 1999. And that may have renewed, but this is a completely revised agreement. That agreement did not have a number of the provisions in this agreement such as insurance, other, other, other-
So we've tightened it up?
Yes, and they approached us, Commissioner. They, because of licensing, they needed to update the agreement as part of their requirements. And so we said, we're going to update it. We might as well tighten things up.
And then what constitutes a temporary emergency holding?
If it's-
And what constitutes an emergency?
Well, it's really on them and only, I will say this, they will use our facility only if it's available. If we haven't rented out and it's not available, they'll have to move on some, another facility somewhere else. But an emergency for them would be if they can't get in their building for whatever reason. They have a huge water leak, they have a roof problem, and they need to get the kids out and get their parents to pick them up. Well, then they'll use our facility temporarily.
And I believe this is just for an emergency when they need it.
Only in a case of emergency.
For their kids to, so they can figure it out.
And again, the agreement that was approved in 99 was a one-page agreement and they've never had to use the facility since 99.
How much did they charge before? How much did they charge?
There was no charge at all.
Why are they going, why did you want to charge now?
Well, we put the fee in there.
Just for the kids. And I think that's a non-profit organization.
Yeah, staff is recommending a fee, Commissioners, because there is a fee associated with the use of the facility, the air conditioning, the lighting. We're just trying to recoup those, some of those costs. And what we could do if the commission prefers is use an hourly rate that if they're only there for two hours, it'll correspond to whatever that rate is as opposed to $240.
They don't, they don't use it any-
No, they have never used it.
I mean, it's just the-
I'm guessing this is something that's just in their guidelines.
It's part of the licensing requirements.
Right. They gotta have all the applications.
Yes, and because the old agreement was since 99, they're just trying to update it. And again, they've already approved this and they're okay with it. But I understand Commissioner Sanchez's concern and we can do an hourly rate. That's not a problem. If they're out in two hours, we're only charging for the two hours based on $36 or $40.
Where are they currently located? Do they have one facility or more than one?
They have more than one. He gave me a list. They have a facility in Bonita Park, Casa Grande, Harlingen High School, the Morning Gardens.
Okay. And so what they would do is train children out of their-
To one location.
To one location from either one location or multiple locations so that parents can know where to pick them up.
Kind of evacuation plan.
I understand.
And to answer Commissioner Mesmar's, I have a question about temporary emergency. There's a line in the agreement that defines it as an unforeseen event which makes it impractical, dangerous, or impossible to use their regular facility.
And one more change, if we do approve the agreement, we have to approve it with the correct address. They called me today and told me on page two, the address needs to reflect 402 West Robinson Street, San Benito, Texas, 78586. So if we approve it, we would have to approve it with that corrected address.
Again, then we have to charge this.
We don't, sorry, the commission can take any action they can necessary. We're, staff is just recommending that in order to cover the utility that we charge a minimal fee and they have, there are, as far as my understanding, they're okay with that.
They're okay with it. And again, we can change the commissioner to an hourly rate. That's not a problem. If that's what wishes the commission.
I sort of tend to agree a little bit with what Commissioner Sanchez is saying that maybe we were to develop, because like you say, they never had to use a facility, right? Anything like that, ever? This is like an extreme fallback emergency, part of their evacuation plan.
Yes, sir.
And the fee structure, it's not, it's unique because it's not going to be recurring rental. It's not like they're going to be using or booking events there regularly. This is simply for emergencies.
Correct.
So maybe, I don't know what staff's recommendation would be about, maybe in that similar approach on our, on our side where we could assign maybe a credit type of, of a waiving of a fee for, I don't know, eight-hour use or something like that. Because that typically would be something that we could upfront give as a consideration.
I would agree with you on that. I was, my mind was, is if that emergency goes for three days because something terrible happened to one of their buildings and they're trying to restructure, I think we should at least give them a one-day credit for that, that day. But if they need to use it subsequent days, we have a predetermined rate that is acceptable for-
Or at some point they cross the threshold of time and then we can have-
Commissioner, I'll point out that they will not use the facilities for normal operations. It is strictly an evacuation-
It's a stationary area for- I have no problem for an emergency. I think, they have an emergency and we should be-
And staff will respect it, we should the commission and we can change it. That's not a problem.
The agreement provides that, that their use of the facilities at any one time shall not be for more than four hours pursuant to their, pursuant to their agreement to that. It's just really to move kids over there, the way they described it to us, to move the children over there so they can call the parents to come and pick them up. So they need a window of two to three hours.
Why don't we just leave it like it is except say, give them, they get first eight hours free? First eight hours in one calendar year free?
We will make that change.
Okay. All right. So would that, would that change first eight hours in any one calendar year is free? Is there a motion to approve the?
And the revision of the address. And the revision of the address.
Right.
I'll make that approve.
All right. With that, with those changes, is there, is there a motion to approve the agreement?
Commissioner Sanchez made a motion, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose like sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Item 18, board of ordinance, 141 ordinance.
None.
None. Yes. David Beto to the Construction Board of Adjustments and Nan Spear to the Seaver Citizens.
Any? With percentage?
None.
Is there a motion to approve board ordinance?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose like sign. Let's go ahead, go item 19, citizen communication. They ramped up, we just have one. Remo Reyes.
Raymond.
Raymond.
Oh, you guys use my phone.
Raymond.
Sure. Raymond. My name is Raymond Reyes. I live here in Harlingen, 706 Nantucket, Raymond Ramon with my father. Basically, I don't really have that much other than, I know we have an interim police chief that I think he should actually be the police chief because he's helped me out personally and solving a lot of issues that I've had before that were both very beneficial to the city, more so. Another concern that I have is the downtown improvement district hasn't really made any improvements to the district. I know of three businesses, three business owners that opened up businesses there and then left, you know? I just don't get it. The same people in a normal business, if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, revitalizing the area, bringing new businesses that are staying, then we need to try something different. We don't go with the same thing over and over because that's just not good business. It's not good business for the city, it's not good business for the downtown district. And, you know, it almost seems like there's some type of favoritism that, you know, we're giving you a chance. It's been a very long time that the same people are in place. And like I said, you know, these businesses are not materializing. It's actually, they're leaving. When I, when my family first moved down here in 76, the Harlingen downtown area was booming. There was a lot of stuff going on. You take the timeline, Harlingen should be way past West LeCoq and Mercedes. We're not even close. We're far behind. And that's not a good thing. I myself in probably maybe five years plan to sell the stuff that my father has here because I've expanded some businesses in Colorado and back in San Antonio where we're from. So, you know, for the rest of the people that are actually from here, they just want to see Harlingen grow. Harlingen's a very good place. It really is. But something needs to be done to go ahead and get to downtown where it should be. And that's basically all I have to say. Y'all have to be.
Oh, you need to sign up in advance. Okay. Sign-up sheet is at the, is there, is usually over there. Anytime you come in, sign up for in advance. All right. We're going to go to item, we're going to go to item eight now.
Yeah, well, there wasn't a pin there, that's why. I didn't see a pin, that's why I didn't sign up.
Consider to take action to approve an ordinance on first reading, amending chapter 51 of the Harlingen Code ordinances to establish a maximum annual increase rate for the use of replanned water, affluent and or approved draft waters by agreement with La Paloma Energy Center LLC. I'd like to entertain a motion that we go into executive session to consult with our attorney regarding the contract portion of this item. Is there a motion, we go into executive session?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go into executive session. There may or may not be an action item after we go out of executive session, but the city commission is going to go and go back, approve and talk to our lawyer about this contract. Okay, round of executive session is 6:59. And is there a motion regarding item eight?